...who are here can see it firsthand, those that are at home. We invite you to come down anytime the doors are open and it's certainly something I think the entire, not, I think, I know the entire city will be proud of. It's certainly befitting a community like North Little Rock and Alderman Witcher was one of the principal people, the principal person from the council who was involved in this, in the planning and in the actual working with the contractors and ensuring that it was done to this caliber as well as on schedule, which we'll thank a few folks in addition to Alderman Witcher on that. All right, Alderman Witcher?
Okay, thank you Mayor. Since we're starting the year off in our renovated council chambers, the, a number of us felt as though that we need to do something special for you based upon your leadership over the years and the, the way you handle the council and work with us, you know, we appreciate that so much. So on behalf of the council, the city staff and many other individuals, we would like to start off the new year with a new gavel for you along with, Mayor, I'll walk up there. We wanted you to start the new year out with the new gavel with your name on it and with the city seal on it.
Alderman, thank you. I think many may realize that I had the opportunity to use a gavel that I had received when I served as president of the Law Student Division of the American Bar Association 2030. Be careful. Our, one of our city attorneys is nodding agreement 30 years ago and unfortunately when we had some damage to our office a couple of years ago, that has been misplaced. I hope it turns up. You know, I used that gavel for those many years to chair this meeting. First of all, let me thank Alderman Witcher and the rest of the council. This was a surprise and much appreciated. That gavel we hope turns up, but we're looking forward to both thanking you for the receipt of this, thanking you again as well as others for this council chambers. We'll, we'll use it with as much hopefully discretion as Alderman Gibson will allow us. So, you know, on behalf of certainly a very grateful mayor, thank y'all very much. I enjoy working with you and every member of the council and with that cooperative effort that goes out through our boards and commissions, you know, our city department heads, our volunteers and indeed our citizenry, this city has made great strides and we look forward to having a continuation of that. Challenges we'll have, but you know, working together we'll overcome those. So with that, thank you very much and I appreciate it. Let me now convene this first meeting of 2006, Ms. Whitby, and ask you to call the row.
Gibson.
Present.
Bryant.
Present.
Robinson.
Present.
Thomas.
Present.
Barry.
Present.
Parker.
Here.
Height.
Here.
And Witcher.
Present.
Aquormus present.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby. We'll begin with Ward one as we rotate the opportunity to begin our meetings with a prayer and the pledge. Alderman Gibson, I understand you're going to be leading us in prayer followed by Alderman Bryant with the pledge.
I pray, "Our most gracious heavenly father, we thank thee for the opportunity to live in a free country. We ask that you would be with this city and this council as we work towards making North Little Rock a much better place to live and work, play, and to do business in 2006. We ask you to be with our friends who are overseas protecting our country. Ladies and guys, asking thy name. Amen."
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion made and seconded that the minutes of the previous meeting be approved or submitted. On the motion, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
And, and as a matter of course, and I didn't hesitate as much as I normally do, but you know, obviously we all know that if any council member wants any one of the three under the blanket motion procedure pulled for separate action, then all they need to do is make that request and it'll be done. Presentations, we've got, as you might know, I think many of you probably do, the work that was placed by this council with Burns Park on our soccer complex four years ago, a little less than, we had the honor to host a Region Three tournament for the U.S. Youth Soccer Association and the earliest that we understand it, that that tournament could come back, there will be literally thousands of people that will be here this summer. We were happy to again be awarded as the host of that. Literally hundreds, perhaps even thousands of folks will be donating their time and effort. The city is excited about its involvement. We have Phil Dwyer, Phil, if you want to come to the microphone and I know Susan Royenbeck is the president, our, the head, head volunteer, one of the head volunteers along with Gail Smith. And we're excited about your being here, we're excited about, again, as we host folks from all over the southwest and indeed all over the country, as coaches and others will be coming in, scouts to take a look at the talented people from everywhere, from Florida to Texas, if I understand, the states involved as well as all of those in between, basically the old south. So we're looking forward to a real exciting year and let me turn the floor over to you, Phil.
Thank you Mayor. Well, we'd like to just say that the soccer community, not only in this state, but the entire region, would like to thank you and the council of your support in establishing the Burns Park Soccer Complex. Everyone that was here in 2002 for the Southern Regionals was excited to be coming back here in late June. Our region had it, had our October meeting in the, in this town leading up to the 2006 Southern Regionals and, and that meeting, you were recognized for your support of soccer and now I would like to present you with this soccer ball which has been signed by all the state presidents, the state representatives and other dignitaries from our region. And the, the word sits, it says, "Mayor Patrick Hayes in appreciation for all you have done for U.S. Youth Soccer Regions Three" and it's dated October 15th, 2005.
Well, Phil, thank you very much. It's kind of hard to shake hands with, with that podium, but we, we're excited about it. This city council along with the other councils who have been involved in allocating the funds and supporting the construction are really the ones, along with the entire community in supporting an activity that all of our kids are day in and day out, more and more participating in. So together we're, we're real pleased that we can make the city of North Little Rock's geography this summer once again a showcase for soccer and thanks for this. We're going to have it in a place that will be viewed by many and, and hopefully the support of soccer will just continue to grow with the involvement of folks like y'all, we know it will. Thank you very much.
With your support, it will too.
We're here, thank you. We, we got our new, yeah, let me just, let me just set it up here, we'll block Mr. Susky for a minute or two. But I know that our five new courts that were finished this past year, we actually I think had some play on them if I'm not mistaken, so we'll be ready with our, with our finest come June. Now, what are the exact dates of the tournament?
June 28th to July 15th.
So everybody, you know, come out during that time, there are going to be many tournaments other than those at Burns Park, but that's a biggie, so if you're in the neighborhood, come out and enjoy some exceptionally talented young people playing a game that this nation is becoming much, much better at.
That's right.
Susan, thank you Phil, we appreciate it. One of the, this is not indicated on our agenda and Mr. Voels, Mr. Smith, I know have put together a short presentation. We had a meeting last week that was called by a meeting of the Federal Emergency Management Association FEMA to bring to us official notice of something that we'd heard had been going on for several months, but had not received any formal indication of, of this action. Mr. Conrad.
Batrel.
Batrel, that's right, who formerly was with the Corps of Engineers, now with a private company, has been under contract through FEMA in order to essentially redraw the floodplain maps. I think we've all heard the terminology floodplain and floodway. There is a, a new designation we're going to learn a little bit about called a shaded zone X and needless to say, that is not something that's going to add to our flexibility in construction, both from a municipal standpoint as well as a private standpoint in the areas that will receive additional attention. Now, you know, I'm not going to go through a great much, a great amount of detail on this, but I didn't want to sit on this information any longer than our first council meeting after we'd received formal notice to kind of give us an idea of what's on the horizon. Now, that's not to say, you know, that this is something that's going to have an effect on us tomorrow. Basically the timetable that was relayed to me was that sometime between a year and two years, they, with public input, with more formal input obviously than what you're hearing now, that there will be maps that will be presented when they're delivered, then we will be under the requirements of those designations, but between now and the time that those maps are actually delivered, somewhere between that one and two-year period, we currently operate under the rules that are in existence now. They have a, a, an effect that will make it more difficult, you know, for us as well as any to construct, but not altogether impossible. So with that, let me not take a whole lot of time on, on this meeting, but you know, we're going to, we're going to maintain a close relationship with FEMA and when we feel that something ought to be raised, both with our state and federal partners in terms of what we think might not be in the best interest of this community as well as this state and this country, we certainly intend to raise our voice because this would be action through an administrative body based on what I understand to be congressional authorization in order to make these moves. So with that, Mike Smith, our city engineer, if you would just take a few minutes and kind of add to this before we go on with the regular agenda, I wanted to make sure that this administration, this administrative act will have severe consequences throughout the nation in terms of how we use our water fronts. Mike?
Thank you Mayor. I feel like this is a exercise number one in PowerPoint for us and Robert showed me forward and backward and he says he's added some slides that I don't know about, so we'll see. And I need to thank him and Robert for preparing these slides by the way. Brief background, the city of North Little Rock is a participant in the National Flood Insurance Program voluntarily by ordinance, we did that several years ago, by which our residents are, have the opportunity or can get flood insurance subsidized by the government. In exchange sort of for that, the city regulates the floodplain as far as development goes, that's what the city has to do. What we regulate is called the 100-year floodplain, which actually technically is called the 1% flood. The city has a whole set of maps, which I have a set right here that shows the floodplain and floodway for the city. We keep that in our office and as we annex areas to the city, we use the county floodplain maps. FEMA at the current time, as the mayor said, is updating the maps for this area primarily along the Arkansas River and they're proposing changes in the regulations and for what is up, going to be up on the slides, the seawall and the levee are basically the same thing. Brief description, you can see it up there, the floodplain consists of two separate parts, the floodway, which the, basically is the waterway for the stream that you cannot encroach on, and then the flood fringe, which you can encroach on and develop on with restrictions, basically and simply stated. The next slide, he's added, what is the floodway? The stream adjacent land reserved to allow for the discharge. What's the floodplain? It's that area that's going to have water in it and a 1% chance in any one year. That just gives you an example right there, what can happen if you don't regulate before the development, you can have a house that might not have any flooding problem and then somebody can develop on the other side of the stream and if they encroach too much, fill too much, then your neighbors are going to have flooding problems. So we have to regulate that type of activity. Technically, a little bit more technically, that shows the floodway and if you look closely, it shows the flood, that whole area is the floodplain. And if you look closely, you'll see it says one foot right there in the floodway. And what we do is as development occurs in that flood fringe, you can, common sense is going to tell you as you fill that flood fringe, the, the area that's left, that's the floodway, is going to have to rise because you've decreased the area of the creek and that one foot is technically how much it's going to rise when the entire flood fringe has been developed and filled. And that's why, for example, in the city of North Little Rock, if you, and when you develop in the flood fringe, you have to put your building floor at least one foot above the floodplain. So when the flood fringe is entirely filled and all that's left is the floodway and the 100-year flood happens and it's one year higher, one foot higher than it was, you're protected. That's the theory. Next shows, this is what FEMA is proposing to change and this has to do with our levee or seawall and/or seawall. That's all it pertains to is the levee or seawall. And there's three different situations. The first one is along the Arkansas River where the floodplain extends all the way to the seawall and you have an area between the river and the seawall that currently is the flood fringe, that is an area you could develop in. They're proposing to change that to all the floodway, which means you will not be able to develop any on the riverside of the seawall, all the way to the seawall.
Now let me just make sure, you can develop, but you have to develop in a way that will not cause a rise in the, in the water by putting things into the floodway. I mean, so it's not a total prohibition, but obviously it adds some different requirements that have to be done and approvals have to be gained, so it's not impossible, but it's certainly more difficult.
You are correct. Very difficult, you have to be issued a, what's called a no-rise certificate and justify to FEMA that you're not affecting the flood level at all. In addition to that, if you look closely outside the levee, where currently it's called Zone X, which is outside the floodplain, they're proposing to change that to a, what they call a shaded Zone X and that level you'll see is the same as the floodplain level. And what they're doing is they're saying that area outside the levee, if the levee broke, this, and we had the 100-year flood, that land on the safe side of the levee now is going to be in what they call shaded Zone X.
Now the next question is, what does that mean? Well, right now, it means nothing.
Correct.
But, you know, in, in talking to Mr. Batrel, I think we all anticipate that you don't do something like that without a reason. So while initially that shaded Zone X does not have any sanctions against it, I think we all feel fairly confident that at some point, some sanctions in terms of construction and how it can be done will be applied to that shaded Zone X. There's one thing that I want to mention to you right now too, that we have to, there's several requirements with regard to our levee and one of which we have to have accomplished and that is a certification by the Corps of Engineers that that levee is engineeringly sufficient. Mike, you want to comment on that?
It's structurally sound, it, they have, there are two certifications that have to be given for a levee or a seawall. One is that the structure is adequate and the other is that there's a maintenance program in place to take care of it. The city of North Little Rock, we can, we certify that we have a maintenance program to take care of the levee, the pump station, pump stations, putting up stop gates in the openings, but the integrity of the levee has to be certified also and the Corps to this point has not been willing to do that.
I don't know if I could quite phrase it that way. We, we've been talking to them about it and they haven't gotten to the point to do it. I don't know if they're, you know, I think they're, I mean, to our knowledge.
They haven't done it yet.
It hasn't been done, but you know, that, to our knowledge was not something that was as much of a need as that we now find during this time of review of these levees as well as the rules surrounding them, it's become more acute. So you'll probably hear some more about us working with the Corps to move that process forward.
Yeah, and the downside is if they don't certify it, then their, FEMA is not going to acknowledge that the levee's protecting anything.
But we'll have, we'll make sure that that, you know, that we have a plan in place to get that done. This is, these are things that are fairly fresh and we didn't want to sit on them for any longer than the next council meeting. Anything else?
That means that when they issued the new maps, it's just on paper is what it's saying. It's not saying that the levee's not, not protecting us, it is, but on paper for FEMA, they're not going to say it is unless we can get it certified.
And again, we're just hearing this at first blush, so you know, we wanted to bring it to you, you know, early on because this is something that is, you know, moving forward and we didn't want anybody to be surprised that there's an administrative process that's in place that will, will or could have a significant effect on how we do our business in terms of construction of things on the river, around the river and obviously over the river.
From the next year, maybe two before this actually would go into place. So we're looking at a year to two years. Okay? The next situation is where the floodplain on the riverside of the levee doesn't reach the levee, so there's a area of land between the floodplain and the levee that's not in the floodplain. And in that case, the only thing that'll change will be that flood fringe will become part of the floodway. And then the third case is where the floodway right now goes all the way to the seawall, which it does in a lot of the area along downtown. The floodway extends to the levee and in that case, the floodway designation won't change at all, but on the other side of the levee, there will be that shaded Zone X that they're calling, that they're right now not going to administer, but you can see in the future, they, they can only go one way, but it, do something with it, make it restrictive, make it where you have to buy insurance, I don't know.
One of the things too, and I want to go ahead and go through this because we don't want to get into any details other than raising this as a concern, but for example, Willa Beach, as we understand, which is not in the floodway now, I don't believe.
Right, it's in the floodplain.
Will be in the floodway.
It would become in the floodway.
And when it comes in the floodway, it's not to say that they can't build something there, but they will have to get a certificate of no-rise if you use that terminology, which may or may not be difficult to get based on what the information we have right now. So, you know, while this is perhaps going to have a minimal effect maybe on the downtown area, it could have a very significant effect upstream and downstream for where we are principally with private property owners as they move to develop and I'd look more toward the down riverside of our city where the growth is actually starting to occur in some, some significance.
And this, this next shot, slide does show the, there is some area downtown that would be affected and that's, let's see, one of them is where the Fireman Lodge is, which right now is floodplain, that entire area, and then downstream past the Presidential Bridge, you can see a large area that would also be affected. And there's a little bitty area upstream from that where the beacon of light's going to go, that's in, right now in the floodplain, that would become floodway.
So we might follow the approach of build now or forever hold your peace.
Build now if you're going to build because it may get a lot more restricted.
I think, you got any more slides? Let's go through them quick.
I don't know. What it means, Robert, you want to take over?
Well, let's just go ahead and bring it to a close.
That's it.
Okay.
And these we keep in the office, the flood maps of the whole city, Public Works is where you'll find them.
And, and again, thank you very much, just wanted to make sure we're aware of it. Before we go back to the agenda.
Thank you.
Let me again kind of go back to the construction that's gone on, you know, on budget and on time are phrases sometimes that don't really happen, you know, more often than, it doesn't happen more often than not. And this one because of Alderman Witcher and, and the involvement of many on the city side, you know, we're appreciative, but obviously we can only do the work when we are able to work with our architects, our contractor and, and the subs along with those who like the Stanleys that I just introduced you to, really lean to and, and make things happen. So on budget and on time is a phrase we like and we appreciate those that help us get there. Let me just take a minute and acknowledge, you know, first of all, our architects and if I could ask you to stand and maybe let us, give us, give you applause and I've got one comment that I'd like to make with our, with our contractor. Clementson Associates, who are architects on Main Street, Gary Clements and Chris Diamond have been here many, many hours, of course we write a check for them, but they come more than what that check would reflect and, and I know in terms of having worked with Gary and Chris before, that their interest goes far beyond just simply being professional. Gary has moved downtown, Chris, I'm not sure where you live, but we won't even ask about that because most of your time is spent downtown. So, you know, we appreciate what you've done and we're proud of the results. Let me ask Austin Construction Company, the owner's David Austin, superintendent is Bruce McDonald, I know, you know, one or both of you are here and, and, and we want to underline, you know, our appreciation, we had, I know a few issues that we needed to work through, but that happens on I'm sure every job and some of the folks that worked with you in making this happen, I know Jim Greenfield, the owner of Greenfield Millwork, Jim is here and, and helped us jump through hoops to, to get some of the product that we needed, the millwork, to enjoy the beauty that you're seeing. Kellogg Painting, Glenn Kellogg I believe is, I don't know if Glenn's here or not, but we certainly acknowledge Kellogg Painting, who was the painting contractor. Air Masters, our heating and cooling and by the way, I'm not going to put this on them, Jim Monk, I think is the principal there. Jim, are y'all here? But I'm told that our air conditioner doesn't work, I don't think that's attributed to them, but the good Lord's air conditioner is working, the windows are open and, and that's one of the things that we were told, we were a little warm in here, so with the help of fresh air, we're cooling things down a bit, but Greenfield Millworks, Kellogg Painting, Air Masters, back with Austin Construction being the general contractor, were a part of the team that helped us make sure that this looks like it does. We had Electric, Arnold Blevins and Arnold Blevins Electric with Jason Lewis and Craig Smith. If y'all want to stand up if you're here, let us acknowledge what y'all have done and appreciate your efforts. Long Sales, lighting consultants, Randall Long. If you're here when I call your name, please stand. You've seen Jay Stanley and Associates, Scott and Jay Stanley with Logan Campbell. If y'all want to stand again and let us acknowledge your efforts, I know I came down here two or three times over the last 10 days and stuck my head in as they were testing this and putting that button and, you know, pulling that lever and, you know, we got a few little things left to go, but it's, it's, it's here and we appreciate greatly what, what y'all have done. Signs First, owner Jerry Hodge, I don't know if Jerry is in the audience, but the signage that we've got in front of you. And let me, in doing that, ask that, you know, the, the folks here from Austin Construction, is it David or is it Bruce? Bruce, it's you, isn't it? Let me just, let you, share something with you on this day as you turn this over to us, which reflects a genuine appreciation for quality work as, as we've said for all those involved. Being known that I, Patrick Hayes, Mayor of North Little Rock, do proclaim this ninth day of January 2006 as Austin Construction Day in the city of North Little Rock in honor of the high-quality workmanship in the renovation of the North Little Rock City Council Chambers, let us, let you know that we hope the wisdom of the legislation that's passed accelerates in, not in volume, but in quality. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you. We've got some public hearings on annexations. We've got some public hearings on annexations. The, I'll tell you what I think we might do, and open them all for comment and you can identify which one you're interested in if you come to the microphone and make comments. You know, we have O-598, which is referred to as the Spanish Land Grand Commercial District Pocket Annexation. We have Bay Meadows 1, Bay Meadows 2. We have Young Road Pocket Annexation. And we have the Brown-Fulkerson Pocket Annexation. So without any further ado, Mr. Hillburn, point out your problem or your, your congratulations and make your comment.
Mayor and members of City Council, my name is Sam Hillburn and I refer to the Young Road Annexation. A large portion of that particular property is a small farm that my wife and I own and basically we raise a little, have a friend that raises a little cattle down there and grows a little soybeans and, and we're asking the city to, to pass us by. We would like to continue to be out there and operate the farm. And I really don't see any real need for the city to have that small farm in, so we're just asking if you would to pass us by.
I am told, Mr. Hillburn, by our city attorney, that we're not going to be able to vote on these until the next council meeting. So this was, this was a public hearing, I think, that's required under the procedure. So you're welcome to talk to us between now and then, but as I understand it, we'll be voting on this next council meeting.
That's fine. Thank you, Mayor and members of City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Hillburn. Microphone's still open. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Susie Witkowski. Um, I really don't have a problem bringing the remaining of our property in. It's, do you see where it says South Wind Drive? There's a piece that kind of goes up next to River Mist Point.
Which one of these, Ms. Witkowski, are you referring to?
101.
What is it?
101.
The Young Road.
101. Young Road Annexation, okay.
My only problem is every time we open a subdivision, we bring it into the city, but when we call the city for something, we really never get any help on anything. So, again, I don't mind coming into the city if you can make them aware that we are in the city and patrol and give us the services.
We are obligated to, Ms. Witkowski, and I sure apologize if that hadn't been the case. Maybe this is part of the reason that, you know, and I'm just hypothesizing, that folks don't know whether this pocket is in or out. And, and that's one of the reasons that we've looked to try to address these pockets that are throughout the city so that there'll be little to no question when we get a phone call as to what, what are, what's our responsibility and what we need to do. So let us know because we don't want to, you know, we're here to do what we need to do for those that are in the city as well as those that aren't, but we want to try to make our knowledge a little bit clearer and that's one of the things we're trying to do. Thank you. Microphone's still open? Microphone's still open? Yes, sir.
My name is George Alexander Brown, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm referring to the Brown-Fulkerson Pocket Annexation.
Uh-huh.
Um, I don't want to be labeled an aguiner. Obviously, if I were, with my little two acres there, had without extra expense access to water, city water and city sewage, that would certainly change a great deal of my concerns. But one of the things that has come up that, that seems to be kind of critical for my negative approach to it is that the United States Department of Agriculture has come forward with a rural utilities service community connect broadband program and with sizable financial grants available. This, it's a great big packet of stuff here. You've got to be, you have to be a rural community. Their definition of a rural area, any area not included within the boundaries of any incorporated or unincorporated city, town, village or borough, having a population of more than 20,000 inhabitants within the United States. Then they have a listing here of the cities in Arkansas that qualify and, or town, not, not cities, but communities. And Scott, Arkansas is listed as one of those communities that qualifies for this assistance. And there must be maybe 300 or 400, but Scott, Arkansas, a river plantation township community qualifies for this, for this program. Scott, Scott, Arkansas is developing very quickly into a bedroom community of, of North Little Rock, Arkansas, and rightfully so. We're having a lot of people that move into the Scott area as a halfway point between Stuttgard and England and other areas and Little Rock. One spouse works in Little Rock or North Little Rock and the other spouse works in Stuttgard or southern areas. And so Scott's a very logical place. And these are high-tech people. These are people who are very computer literate, understand the broadband, the internet, access it, all, all these things. We've got a program here, and I'm not that much of high-tech, being 74 years old, but it can, what we're going to see very soon is that we're going to be able to have phones that do not require in any way land-based phone voice over the internet. You're going to be able to have broadband, instant access. I have, on this little two-acre pocket here of my land, I've got a grain elevator tower that's 115 feet tall. I've got another elevator right close to it that we can put one on top of the other and we can have a tower 200 and some odd feet. And we can guide off on my grain elevator tank. It may be more valuable as a tower than it ever was as a grain elevator for this broadband. We'd have roughly a 200 and some odd foot tower. The, it's hard to believe, but it, that facility there could very well be changed from a grain elevator facility to something that has, that, that this particular Rural's Utility Service Community Connect Broadband Program. So for that reason, right now, until we find out whether our grant has been accepted or not, we would like the City of North Little Rock to, not to include the Brown-Fulkerson Pocket. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Microphone's still open?
Well, my name's Jerry Yankor from Willow Beach. I'm president of the Willow Beach Association, Homeowners Association. I came here to speak against the, or I guess for the annexation of the Brown-Fulkerson Annexation. But I appreciate the information on the flood, the flooding change that you just went through. A little bit on this property. This property is an extremely bad eyesore in the Willow Beach area, which is a pretty area of North Little Rock. We have some Willow Beach houses which face this 115-foot tower and two big silos and it's all rusty and grown up, vines throughout, cars and junky and so forth. Some people have to look at it 24 hours a day, other people back up to it. Whenever you drive down Highway 165, it stands out like a sore thrum. The Willow Beach area is targeted for substantial growth in the next two years and we need to get this place cleaned up or else torn down or make a use, as Mr. Brown says. However, I wouldn't think you would want that thing to have a, a big dish antenna on the top of it. You're going to build a tire, you certainly wouldn't want it on that. We can't get North Little Rock code or any enforcement to help, to help us get anything done, short of going to court to try to clean the place up. The Willow Beach homeowners are firmly behind wanting this property annexed so we can get the owner to clean it up. Request you vote to annex it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sandra. I see you out there. I want to ask you to come up next. The microphone's still open on this public hearing on these annex, proposed pocket annexations? Going once, going twice? We'll go ahead, instead of adjourning it, we'll recess it until the next council meeting where then we'll have an opportunity to vote on this, these annexations. There are several others that in all likelihood we'll bring in front of the council so that at least we'll make a conscious decision on whether we want these pocket annexations in the city or, or out of the city. With that, let me recess this public hearing. Little tidbits real quick. We keep jumping around and I apologize for, for that. My agenda got a little mixed up. But Sandra Taylor Smith is here and wanted to share with y'all a little bit of the history of some of the decorations that we have. I know Alderman Witcher, I'm sure is familiar, but the two seals that are on either side as well as some of the photographs and give you little plans of what we're going to try to do with some of the historical photographs. Ms. Smith?
Well, I wanted to talk a little bit about the seals. The one that you see on your right was the first official city seal. Came out of the late 1920s when the city was having a very strong period of prosperity. Actually, there were signs that hung on the entrance of every area going into the city from out of town that said, "Welcome to North Little Rock, the city, industrial city of the south." And "Welcome to North Little Rock, the city without indebtedness. Please locate here." So this first seal indicated what was causing our prosperity in the 1920s. The railroad shops, a steam locomotive and the river, a steamboat on the river. And this is how the city saw their prosperity coming about what represented the city. By 1956, they adopted the seal to your left. It was sponsored by Alderman Paul Snow and it reflected up in the upper portion, the Air Force Base, which had been established in 1955. On the right third is a diesel locomotive. And on the left third of it is the North Little Rock Electric Department, which represented the income of millions of dollars for the city. By then, they had changed the logo or the, the slogan to the industrial city of Arkansas. Over in the center, the North Little Rock NLR with the paddle wheel is a logo that was adopted in 1980. It was advertising and promotion contracted to have this design done. The paddle wheel represents the wheel of industry that the city continues to enjoy. It represents the steamboat industry that was the foundation of business and it also represents the O-Mill. One thing of particular note, the photograph that you see on the left over the console is of President Theodore Roosevelt. Um, yeah, Teddy Roosevelt, when he came here in October 19, or yeah, 1905. And ironically, 100 years ago tomorrow, the city changed its name from North Little Rock to Argenta, largely as a result of President Roosevelt's visit where he addressed the citizens of Argenta and the mayor of Argenta. They had intended to change it back to Argenta anyway, but went ahead and did it quickly after he called and called it Argenta. So that happened 100 years ago tomorrow. The large photograph that you see framed, the headlines, we celebrated our centennial last year and this was a newspaper headline in February 2004 proclaiming that the Supreme Court had upheld the right for North Little Rock to annex Little Rock's 8th Ward.
Let me just give a quick timeline if I could and then correct me if I'm wrong. We were, our first incorporation was when we were the 8th Ward of Little Rock. It was the first time we had municipal character. Would that be correct?
North Little Rock was formed in 1901.
No, no, I'm talking about, we were part of Little Rock from-
Yes.
1890 to 1904.
Correct.
Yeah, and, and a lot, I don't believe, know the transition from, from the 8th Ward to North Little Rock. In order to take advantage of the law that was upheld by that notice, the City of North Little Rock was incorporated just north of the then 8th Ward of Little Rock, which was us, in order to unite with that city, that newly incorporated city because of the law that was passed by the Arkansas General Assembly in perhaps 1903. And so when we separated, we were actually known as North Little Rock for about a year and a half, until like Sandra just mentioned, we changed the name to North Little Rock 100 years ago tomorrow. Is that what you're saying? Or shortly after?
Changed it to Argenta.
To Argenta. From North Little Rock to Argenta. And then until 1917, we were known as Argenta. And then in the fall of 1917, we changed back to North Little Rock.
Yes. Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mayor, that, that does bring up, if I may, that does bring up one other seal that we don't have hanging right now, and that's the City of Argenna seal. We have saved a place in the chamber on this column with the light on it and sometime in the next two to three months, that seal will be delivered to us and it'll hang at that location at that time. So.
We look forward to it. I think we've covered everything now except for the agenda item. There's one more item that I'd like to do before we go into the unfinished business of, of last year. You have on your desk a notice of a special call and it's my understanding that all of you have executed that notice of special call. It is for a meeting to be held at 6 o'clock a week from tomorrow. That's on the 17th, Tuesday at 6 o'clock. There will be a single item on that special call. Mr. Gertz, you want to come to the microphone just in case we have any questions? As you know, we have been going through some fairly time schedule oriented decision-making in terms of whether we wanted to participate in Plum Point and if so, to what amount. We did receive a little bit of good news with regard to the closing of Plum Point. Unless something's happened since I talked to Mr. Gertz Friday, they've moved it back. But they moved it back from the 15th of February to the 20th of February, which is not a whole lot of beneficial wiggle room. So with that, unless things change, still does not, it still forecloses our ability to consider an out-and-out 10% ownership option, except through the purchase power agreement that is then convertible to an ownership option. The opportunity to participate in Plum Point that will be before the council next week will be whether to participate through a Missouri Joint Action Agency that will need to know whether we're interested and if so, to what amount, so that then they will be able to make arrangements to close on the new closing date in February, the 20th. And, and if, if we do, from what I understand, except for the cost of upgrading transmission prior to the acquisition or prior to the receipt of electricity, we will not need to come up with any dollars, that those will essentially be obtained through the financing that the Missouri Joint Action Agency will do. So what the meeting will be for next Tuesday, and, and one of the reasons that, you know, obviously if, if we could wait till the following week, we would, but we've been informed because of the critical nature of the shortness of the closing date, that indeed the 18th, which is the day that we would have to execute any documents, is the last day that Missouri can, can, can give us before they need to know whether we're going to be there or whether we're not and if so, to what extent, again, that we're going to be there. We're also waiting because we are exploring some other options. That information is currently being gathered on those options that will help us decide how much power that we might want to acquire from Plum Point, should we decide to acquire any. So, you know, I picked that day. I know Alderman Gibson, I've had a chance to visit with him and I know, you know, he's made some plans that are not changeable. I know he won't be able to be there. I hope he's the only one, but I hadn't had a chance to talk to any other members of the council, so I'd like to hear from you now before I walk merrily along thinking the 17th at 6 o'clock is okay and then I'll be the only one that shows up. So let me, first of all, let's see about the date, whether anyone else has a conflict or a problem or, or that is not a good time.
I'll be here.
You're here?
I'll be here.
I'm here.
Yeah.
I'm in.
Okay. Of course, Mayor, I can't vote.
Right. I understand.
But I also am leaving town that day.
That, all right, that day?
That day.
So you won't be there for a quorum?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, then, we've got a quorum, but everybody else needs to be here. I think we might be able to have one, you know-
Questionable also.
Okay.
Scheduled to be at another place that evening.
Alright, well, we, you know, we have five will constitute a quorum. Now, some decision this significant, if you're not here, I would still, even though you can't be counted for legal purposes in terms of a vote, I would sure be interested in hearing from you, because if someone has some strong reservations, this is a reasonably significant commitment. It gives us some real advantages, I think. We're all troubled, to be honest, by the shortness of time that we have in order to make this decision. But nonetheless, that's what we have, and we need to deal with it the best way we can. Alderman Height?
Two questions. This Missouri Joint Municipal Utility Commission, that's the entity that made the presentation to us sometime last year, correct?
Correct. They came down and that gentleman made that presentation.
The second question is, have you considered holding your special call meeting Monday night instead of Tuesday night?
Well, it's a holiday, but the answer is, if that would be better, we certainly would be willing to.
Mayor, it doesn't affect mine. I've got a trip that was planned back in June, so I will leave town Thursday and be gone for 10 days. So, it doesn't affect mine. I just, a couple of things. I just got it tonight. I will take the opportunity to spend some time reading it in the next couple or three days and have some questions, which I will send to you and Mr. Gertz if there, if there are any questions in, that we get into this.
The 16th, it will not be a good day for me.
Excuse me?
The 16th.
The 16th will not be a good day for you?
Not be a good day for me.
Uh, I saw Alderman, you know, Alderman Parker, did you?
16th wouldn't be a problem for me, but the 17th will.
Well, we've got one and one, so let me just, you know, keep it the same, I guess, and just ask, you know, I know Alderman Gibson won't be here, but Alderman Parker, if you are at all able, but if you're not, then we certainly want your voice and your thoughts, either in writing or conveyed to me in any way, 'cause if anyone has any strong reservations, I certainly want to be in a position to share that with those of us that are here. This is a fairly significant decision, and I'm sorry that we're having to approach it in a way that this special call meeting needs to be the forum to decide it. Mr. Gertz, you wanna add or subtract anything from what I've just said?
Well, I would just remind everyone...
Go ahead and speak to the microphone, if you can swing it around for you.
I would just remind everyone that the 17th is the date, last date, that we could utilize the option of a purchase power agreement through the Missouri Joint Action Agency. You know, even if we let that day go by, we still have the option of investing through the purchase power arrangement through LS Power, which is later convertible to an ownership interest.
And I think that day is up to the 15th or now the 20th?
That's, that's up to the 15th of February.
But at this point, if you had to make a recommendation, you know, the best of what we know right now, that would not be your first recommendation.
Well, there are a number of issues that are still open that we're looking at, but if I had to make the decision today, yes, sir, I would, I would say that the Missouri option would be the way that I would recommend.
And in the next six, seven days, you know, we do anticipate giving information that will help us make a more definitive recommendation or confirm the one we have.
That's correct.
Mayor, can, in 25 words or less, can Mr. Gertz tell us why he leans toward Missouri?
Well, at this point in time, it, there's, there's a couple of reasons. First is that if you look at the Missouri option, I think it will be, in the long run, the lowest cost option. By closing on the 15th, we feel like we have some certainty with regard to what our interest rate would be.
The 15th or the 20th?
Excuse me, if we close on the 17th.
Well, actually, we'd have to do it on the 18th with our meeting, the evening of the 17th.
Right. We would have some certainty as to what we think the interest rate is going to be. If we choose the later option and we don't close until June, I think we're in an environment at this point in time where interest rates are rising. You know, it's, I can't say with any certainty that we would have a higher interest rate, but I think it would be a logical conclusion that we would probably see a higher interest rate and our costs would go up. And there's some other operational issues that make the Missouri option attractive. And also, if you look at the LS Power option, we would not want to enter into the purchase power arrangement with them on a long-term basis. The, if you look at the cost of power under that option, it's approximately 17% higher than it would be under an ownership interest. So, if we were to sign off on a PPA with LS Power, then we would have to be fairly certain that we were going to close by the June timeframe. If for some reason that we couldn't, then we would be subject to a 30-year PPA, which starts off higher by 17% and has escalation factors in it that I think are rather onerous. So...
Let me clarify what Mr. Gertz just said, Alderman, is essentially that we would only enter into the purchase power agreement with LS Power as a vehicle to exercise a clause in that agreement that would allow us to convert that to an ownership interest. That's the only reason he's saying that we would, we would enter into that agreement to actually purchase a part of the plant. And, and the dollars that would need to start flowing would be much earlier than what we envision under the Missouri Joint Action Agency approach. So, you know, things could change between now and next week. I hope they don't, but the, the best option now, if we were to have to choose an option, would be through Missouri, Missouri Joint Action Agency. You know, we still have the option to enter into the PP, the purchase power agreement with LS Power, but we would only do that based on what we know now, with the, with the, with the desire to exercise the option to purchase an ownership interest in the plant via that agreement.
The part I heard back at the beginning of it was kind of a lower cost option. What, I thought we were doing something on the transmission cost, what it's gonna cost to get it here. What, where are we in relation to that study?
Well, we received some information back from a consultant where we're looking at the transmission charges, and those are the charges that would be required to upgrade the transmission system in order to accommodate power flowing from Plum Point to North Little Rock. We have that information, but we have not had a review by the consultant at this point. I just received it yesterday. So, and it's, you know, we still gotta work through the details on that and see exactly where it is. So, that's, we're looking for another couple of days to, in order to firm up some of this information.
Okay.
But I don't see any significant change at this point.
Okay, I thought that was one of the issues we were looking at, as far as whether or not it was gonna be cost-effective to buy part of the plant. If it's gonna cost us more to get it here, or am I wrong? I mean, I thought that was...
No, no, what Mr. Gertz said, you're, you're absolutely correct, Alderman. What Mr. Gertz said was that we have received additional information since the last council meeting in, in first review, 'cause we just recently received it. It does not appear that the transmission cost would be much greater in, within the range that they're looking at
What we started off.
than what we were talking about. So, that, you know, it's not a deal stopper. It's still a range, but it's less than 10 million, I believe. Some...
The initial values are somewhere between 4.8 and 9 million dollars.
4.8 and 9 million dollars. So, it, what we're saying is that upon further review and confirmation of that information, the transmission costs are still within very acceptable ranges to make this a worthwhile acquisition in, in our involvement. So, we have received some. We're gonna confirm that. So, you're absolutely correct. We are looking at some other transmission issues with perhaps some other opportunities that we're reviewing that will help us make a decision on what we might want to recommend to the council in terms of the amount of power, if we recommend at all, that we might want to acquire. Alderman Thomas?
The only comment I had, that those that couldn't be here could present us the questions that they'd like asked.
However they want to involve themselves, that, that they would like. We certainly would want their comments or questions or observations at that meeting, and we encourage you between now and next Tuesday night to contact Mr. Gertz directly, present any questions. If we have any information, we'll try to get it to you in the most expeditious way possible. So, you know, this is one thing that we want every council member involved to the extent that they would desire, and, and whether or not they can be here is, is relevant, obviously, to the vote, but not relevant to your input. Okay, with that, then there'll be a special council meeting held at six o'clock on January 17th in these council chambers, and we hope a lot of ground's covered between now and then. Thank you, Mr. Gertz, and let's go to the agenda. Ms. Whitby?
Old Business, ordinance 0598, Mayor Hayes.
Uh, gonna hold that.
0599, Mayor Hayes.
Hold that.
05100, Mayor Hayes.
Hold, hold that.
05101, Mayor Hayes.
Hold that.
05102, Mayor Hayes.
Hold that.
New Business, Resolution 0601, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution accepting a donation of property from Willow Street Ventures LLC and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement governing the donation.
Move for the adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let me just point out to council that, you know, there is a restriction that we are accepting along with this donation, that the property that we have, other than a ballpark and parking for that, and in relation to our seven acres, it is with regard to parking. We are indicating that we'll use that for parking unless we have a mutual agreement with the donor, which is Willow Street Ventures, which, you know, is Warren Stevens. And, and I, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. We've worked very well with the Stevens. If we come in the future and we don't need that land, or there is a demand for that land, I am very confident that the Stevens, Warren, and Willow Street Ventures will work with us in dealing with that, as the donation agreement indicates. With a joint decision by the parties, this property can be used for whatever purpose, removing that restriction, but that needs to be jointly. And, and even with that, I feel very confident that the beginning with regard to the parking will be acceptable. You've heard a little debate going on as to what, you know, I may recommend to this council with regard to cost of parking. Obviously, that will be a decision of this council and will be sometime into this year, you know, perhaps before the end of the year. It's something that's under discussion, and that recommendation will come to this council, and this council will decide. With that, if there are no questions on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0602, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
Resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 4514 Boyer Street in the city of North Little Rock constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Uh, we need to have a public hearing. If anyone wants to comment on this, the microphone's open. 4514 Boyer, come to the microphone, state your name, state your comments.
Yes, my name is John Grayson. I own a piece of property there. Y'all had me in a trick bag. I was given time to finish that building. I was on schedule. I found out that the building was not raised high enough. I called Mr. Green, talked with him, told him I could not meet these deadlines and raise this building again. I was told, "That's fine. We know you're working on it. You're doing a good job. Don't worry about it." So, I spent, I asked him at that time. I said, "I can't keep spending money and not meet these deadlines." He said, "Don't worry about it. I'd spend another $5100 after that point to have that building raised and that foundation done." I would have had the building completed by the deadline of the, of the time to complete it, but I couldn't meet these intermediate deadlines. So, I'm in a trick bag now. My permits, you're gonna wanna come in my building because it's not complete, and you won't give me a permit to complete it. So, I, I'm just in a trick bag. I guess, though, I have to look for something good to come out of this, and, you know, they told me this building was not safe because of those foundation it was under there. Well, I went by my daughter's school. There's buildings sitting there with that foundation under that she goes to school in every day that are leaning over, that are falling down. Maybe that's what this is good for, to get those problems corrected. Thank you. I'd like if you'd look at these pictures, if you would. Thank you for your time.
Microphone's still open?
Mayor, this project has got all kind of problems from the start to the finish. And I've been down here, I've been to the council. I've talked to y'all. I've been to the review board. The problem here started out the city doing a lot of talking, and I mean, they done a lot of talking, but it seemed like nobody was listening. They wasn't paying any attention to the building inspector. The bricks was supposed to been, the block was supposed to been a solid core foundation under it. I was there when Mr. Phillips told the guy from Morgan Portable Building that there was supposed to be a solid core foundation under it. And he said, "How come this has just now come up?" He said, "Nobody told me anything about it." And Mr. Phillips told him, he said, "Well, if you had have been here, to start with, you would have had it." The first Morgan Portable Building representative come in here, he had that paperwork. So, Mr. Phillips told him, he said, "What you need to do is talk to him," because the paperwork was put out, and he has it. I took some pictures of this thing where the, there's no mortar in the blocks. It's supposed to be a solid core foundation, and to me, that means all the way around the outside perimeter of this building. It don't mean a few blocks here and a few blocks there, a little mud here and a little mud there. That ain't what it meant. It said solid, just like that wall there with no gaps in it. That is not what this has got. The places where this building is supposed to be sitting on blocks, the, the seals is sagging. You can look at one end of it to the other, and you see them sagging. This metal was loose from the top to the bottom when the vinyl siding was put on over the top of it. Right now, the vinyl siding is peeling off of the back and coming loose. And this is a sore eye to the neighborhood. It's a disgrace to the neighborhood. And he said 12 months to finish this. He didn't finish it. He lost, wasted a lot of pretty weather. And then he come back, and y'all give him three more months. And every time he gets a little time, this thing looks worse. And I was told at a small age, when you start with nothing, and you don't put a little pride and a little respect and put a little whatever into it, that's exactly what you wind up with is nothing. And that's exactly what we've got down there, is nothing. It's a bunch of mess, and that's all it is. It's, like I said, it's a disgrace to the neighborhood, and I hope that y'all make plans to move this thing. I will show y'all some pictures that you can see what I've been talking about. That was supposed to have been a, a modulant home.
We're not getting into debate. You know, this is public comment, not public debate. Yes, sir.
The, that was supposed to have been a, a modulant home to start with. And when this foundation was, was dug to put the, the blocks on for the building, they didn't get wide enough with the foundation on the outside, or either the building was built too big because it's got a hangover. They come back and dug a little ditch around the outside of the perimeter of this foundation with a shovel, poured it full of mortar. I never seen no rebar, no steel or nothing in it. And I wish that I got a picture of that, 'cause this is only hearsay. But the bricks was on that little ledge that they poured, cracked under both of the winters on the east side. They had just about as much mud in them as these concrete blocks has got, which is not enough. There was no brick ties to the building. There was no brick ties to the concrete block. And I don't know why y'all can't give the neighborhood a little ease and move this And I don't know why y'all can't give the neighborhood a little ease and move this thing out somewhere or another where it can be a storage building for somebody instead of a, a place to rent. Mayor, I thank you and the council for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Grice, I'm, I'm gonna give you a chance to make a comment at the end, but we'll wait till all those folks who, you know, who are speaking in opposition, so that we just need to get you up here once. So I'm gonna let you clarify anything that you'd like in just a second.
I want to congratulate you all on such a beautiful place. If I ever decide to get married again, I'll, I'll rent this place. But I don't, don't hold your breath. My nephew...
Pat, you need to tell everybody who you are.
My name is Patricia Harris, a North Lawn policeman. God love him, calls me Miss Pat. Most of my friends do. I have owned property in North Little Rock since 1952. I've not always lived here. But in 1952, I bought property on Proto Street. I did not live there. I rented it for many years. In 1975, in October, I moved there. My husband was affiliated with Central Structures of Arkansas. We wholesale, we built it. Someone did not do what he asked him to do. The outer side wall that is in front of Broadway, when they poured it, he told them, he said, "It's got to set up for four days before it is lifted up." Well, they didn't do it. They, they stood it up, and on Monday morning, it fell in the street. So, my husband knew all about steel structures. And whenever this so-called house was gonna be brought into our neighborhood, he said, "It's got to have a sound foundation on it, a full sheet of concrete. If it don't, it'll split. Nothing that he puts on the outside of it will last. It'll be nothing but a fire hazard. And on top of that, we're not supposed to have anything that looks like a trailer house in our neighborhood." I know that we need houses, homes. We, there was this gentleman that bought one of the houses on Boyer. He did like the appearance did. He went inside and gutted that house. It looks like a brand-new house on that street. But I do hope, and I have nothing against this man whatsoever, but I do hope that he takes, it is just actually a Morgan shell building. It's to use for storage or whatnot, but it's not a home in Rose City. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wants to speak in, in favor of this legislation?
I'm Joe Reynolds, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment, and I know that this has been going on for over a year. I've heard a lot of comments...
You are a citizen now.
I am. And I do own property in that general area also. But I've been listening to the comments from Brother Taylor and other people, and I've looked at this thing five or six times myself, and I know that there's been two, twice, there's been two code citations issued down there for different violations, tall grass, trash, whatever. And from the looks of it, it appears to me, from being in the building business before, been in the block laying business and the brick laying business before, that I wouldn't let that foundation be put on or anything I owned. It's not very sturdy. It don't look, it don't look very well. And they say, "Well, we're gonna put brick over the front of it." Well, that's okay. You can hide anything. If you wanna paint it, or put enough concrete on it, or put enough brick in front of it, you can probably hide it. But this is not a very well-structured perimeter around that. And anybody knows anything about laying blocks or brick will tell you it's not. It looks atrocious down there. The siding's falling off of it. This gentleman that's here, I don't know him personally. I don't have anything against him. I never did any business with him, and matter of fact, I won't do any business with him. But he's not been trying to make that neighborhood look better with what he's putting down there, that's for sure. And I echo what Brother Taylor and Ms. Harris has been saying, that that don't need to be down there. He had every, he had lots and lots of opportunities to meet all the requirements, and I was at all, uh, more, probably 85% to 90% of the planning commission meetings when Morgan was there and when he was there. And they were told on many occasions what they needed to do over a period of time, and they didn't get it done. And all of a sudden, we wanna get down to a deadline. "Well, I need to finish it by noon tomorrow." Well, when you had 16 months, 15 or 16 months to finish it, it's hard for me to understand why I gotta wanna get down to the last couple of days or the last week to try to finish something that should have been finished a long time ago. Thank you.
Anyone else wanna comment? I'm gonna save the last comments again for, you know, for Mr. Grice. So if anybody wants to comment other than Mr. Grice, floor's open. It's about to be closed. Mr. Grice, you wanna come make any final comments?
Yes, I agree this did take a long time. And I was getting to it, when it, when I took over, I had 45 days total. I was given a two-week period, a two-week period, a two-week period. I was, was meeting those until I found out that, that Morgan did not have the building high enough. When I met with the city, Mr. Voiles and Mr. Green, they told me that the building needed to be raised three or four inches. They indicated it was plenty high enough. In fact, when Morgan had the brick up there, they told them, "You can go underneath that building, and you can put a wood foundation up," which indicated that the building should have been at the proper height. Well, when I raised this building seven inches, my brick mason, who is Clark, one of the better brick companies here in North Little Rock, said, told the city, "The building is not high enough." Me trying to do the things right and do them as they should be done, cost me my permit. They pulled this because I was trying to do everything possible to be sure this thing was done exactly right. Mr. Clark at Clark Building, these blocks that they're showing you where they said they have no mortar in them, those are architectural blocks. They're designed that way. That is a solid block. Those, those stripes down the middle where they say there's no mortar, there's no mortar supposed to be in there. If you look at the size of those, you can see that is a split block. That's for design. I think that I've done everything possible. What happens if this is an old house that you condemn because the wiring's bad? Don't you give those people a chance to fix their wiring or whatever? But yet, on mine, you're gonna tell me, "Move it out." Well, the only alternative I've got from here is just to appeal it to Circuit Court, let it sit there for another six months, a year, or whatever, until we can get to court and let a judge make the decision. If you'll give me a reasonable time, I'll get that building done. And it is, as far as I'm concerned, the prettiest place in the neighborhood. If you walk across the street, the porch is falling off. I don't know how to design a building where the porch hangs off of the side. The flat-top roofs, there's flat-top roofs all over that area. If this thing was this ugly, why do I have a waiting list on people wanting to rent it because they need a place to live? Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Uh, we'll adjourn this public hearing, and before the council is the legislation, what's your pleasure?
We have a motion, don't we?
Uh, don't...
Yes.
Thanks, do we?
Yes, sir.
What's the motion?
There's a motion and a second.
To adopt?
Uh-huh.
To, well, don't we have to suspend the rules? No, this is a resolution.
Mm-hmm.
Right, resolution, sorry. Motion and a second. Any comments?
I have a question.
All right.
Mr. Voiles, we've, I don't know how long we've sat up here and listened to the story about this house down in Rose City. You were, you attended the planning commission meeting back several months ago, if not years ago now, when they first presented their plans for this building there. That building that was constructed, is it exactly like the planning commission approved?
It's not exactly. It's not completed. The, this started around the, the first of the summer of 2004, and was to go 12 months. We did get into a debate with the company as to what they agreed to build. The planning commission approved a modular structure with a certain residential look that required certain things.
Come out. Does this house have that look that was approved by the planning commission?
It, it is, has a portion of that look. The porches are a little different, but there was brick on it. We told them, "You need a foundation to support the building," as you agreed to with the planning commission. That was removed. The veneer was removed, and they were putting on block underneath it, raised the structure to put on block. So it's not finished.
Okay, but finishing it is not, is, if you took a picture of it, is it the same picture they presented at the planning commission back in 2004?
It's not the same picture. It's similar.
Thank you.
This is a duplex.
Alderman, Thomas?
I guess I was gonna ask, if he wanted to fix it as you wanted, could he do that?
Of course, the, you know, we had, we entered into an extension agreement and listed certain specific things that needed to be done. The first was to hire a plumber and an electrician. And now, two weeks before the termination of this agreement, those who had been contracted never called for inspections to have the plumbing inspector and the building, I mean, the electrical inspector approve the work through the bonded contractor. Those calls were never made. Those inspections had not been done. We gave him specific timelines so that we could follow this project and to see that work would be done. And by the 7th, they had not finished the block work. A week later, on the 15th, the block work had not been finished. I had not been contacted to, with any explanation by the owner as to what the delay was until I made contact myself. The, um, other problems with, with, with the property, the brick that was supposed to be completed on the 15th had not been delivered to the property. So I just thought they had not, in good faith, pursued the extension agreement, in that primarily the bonded contractors, the electrical and plumbers, had not made contacts for inspections. It's readily apparent that the foundation wasn't done, and that the brick work wasn't finished, and the side, where the driveway was not done. With that, we, we pulled the permit based on the inadequacy of the work.
So you, so at this point, he can't do anything more to it?
We put a stop work on the project and directed it to, to the Housing and Building Board of Adjustment for an appeal. That, that hearing was held, and they denied his appeal. And now it's to condemnation effort. You, as a council, can, of course, have control over the project, but staff has worked through this diligently for the last year and a half, and it's been somewhat torturous with the community's attention to the project and the lack of completion. So every time we meet, we have this problem that faces the community, and so here we are now at this final stage.
Alderwoman Robinson?
I think we need to, I think we need to move forward on this, simply because this is something that has been going on since August 2004. But not only that, Mr. Grice signed a document agreeing to deadlines as to when he would have certain things completed. Mr. Grice has not complied with the agreement, and this is an issue we've been going on, like I said, since August 2004. We need to move forward and condemn and move it.
Any further discussion? On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Next item?
Resolution 0603, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 1214 East 16th Street in the city of North Little Rock constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Have a motion?
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the mo, oh, not on the motion. Is there anyone here that cares to talk about 1214 East 16th Street? 1214 East 16th Street. I'm gonna open the public hearing for that. Again, I ask anybody here that wants to talk about 1214 East 16th Street. Reset, or adjourn the public hearing. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0604, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 1216 East 16th Street in the city of North Little Rock constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Have a motion?
I, I'll give you the motion, yes. Motion.
Second. There's a second. Uh, we have a public hearing. Uh, I'll open up the public hearing for anyone here that may wanna speak as to the council's action on 1216 East 16th Street. That's 1216 East 16th Street. Seeing no one coming to the microphone, I will adjourn the public hearing on 1216 East 16th Street. Any discussion? On the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher? Ordinance 0601, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance amending ordinance number 7697 and ordinance number 5328 defining certain terms establishing requirements for mobile storage containers, first reading.
Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I, I think because of the, this one probably needs to sit one council meeting at least. This, this has to do with the pods.
Mr. Voiles, you wanna come to the microphone real quick? This has to do with both the pods, and there's another issue that's, that's companion to that. Mr. Voiles, quickly explain what we're asking here.
Yes, sir. We have a new use in the city, the rental of pods that are placed in residential areas. We've had cases where metal storage, seagoing cargo containers are set in front yards for over a year period. This is proposal amendment to the zoning ordinance, restricting the time that those units can be in, on residential property.
What are we restricting that time to?
30 days.
I wish I'd have known this was available for my remodeling. We might have had a neighbor...
Mayor, as long as it took you to do your remodeling, a year, a year and a half wouldn't have done that one.
And the other issue, Mr. Voiles?
Uh, all I'd like to add, that we're not, there's a no-fee permit on these. Just, we just want to track them. And the second element is dealing with lots of record. We had an issue come up, and we attached this to the legislation. Old recorded tracks that are going to be developed need to have development review. That's part of our subdivision control regulations, and this, we hope, will clarify that element of our regulations and, and make sure that people who have old tracks go through the planning commission for review period for redevelopment of property.
I'm, are we in any hurry for this, Mr. Voiles?
Yes, sir.
Um, Mr. Alderman Bryant?
Yeah, I've got a question. When people are redoing a house and they rent those containers to put the refuge from the house in, if the city doesn't pick it up, which we do very well in this city, is there any restriction on how long those dumpsters can be in? That's not included in this legislation.
No, this is not including dumpsters. These are those, uh, these, these units are most of the time...
I know, I know what we're talking about, but would that be something you'd wanna include in this? Because I know, I know of one particular instance...
I don't know. You've, you've...
Where there was a dumpster in front of a house for...
In Rose City.
About four months or five months.
Or longer, yeah.
And I don't know if that's something you wanna include in this, or...
It wasn't the...
We're not gonna do it tonight?
It wasn't the focus of the legislation, but it is something we could add.
Well, it, it's something I think we need to look into. I know that even through our dumpster program that we're doing, is they sit there an awful long time sometimes, and it really needs to be addressed. I mean, it...
But that's more of a construction element. You know, we have buildings that are going up, and they'll have a dumpster along with construction, so it's, might get into a more complicated issue. This is for residential areas only, on these pods.
Okay. I, I'll work on, help work on the other one then.
Uh, why don't, Alderman Berry?
I think one of the things that we might do is we might do a public hearing on it. Have your next count.
Now, I think this one's probably been through a pretty good public hearing as far as the pods. It's probably not, not in front of the city council, but in front of the, of the planning commission. And, but if we do make any major amendments to this, I'd suggest we have a public hearing on it here, because it, that's just what we need to do. But there, there are several concerns about how long some of these 10-yard dump roll-offs, or whatever you wanna call them, can sit some places, and where they sit. Sometimes on top of a sidewalk, like next to the... next to the, don't know what place, about a high school.
Why don't, why don't we do this? So if anyone has any desire to amend this, you know, we'll just leave it on, we won't take it to second reading, and we'll look to amend it. If it is amended, then we'll wait till third reading to act on it. If it's not amended, then we may, you know, suspend the rules, or see about suspend the rules next time if there's no, you know, significant concern. So we're not in a hurry for this. So with that, next item.
Ordinance 0602, Alderman Witcher?
Call it, please.
This is an ordinance vacating and abandoning a portion of High Cliff Drive in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move suspend rules and place it on second reading.
Second. Is there a second?
Yes.
On the motion to suspend the rules?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
This is an ordinance vacating and abandoning a portion of High Cliff Drive in the city of North Little Rock, second reading.
Move suspend rules and place it on its third reading.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
This is an ordinance vacating and abandoning a portion of High Cliff Drive in the city of North Little Rock, third and final reading.
Mayor, there's a small typo that needs to be taken care of in the second whereas, change the word from Summers to High Cliff.
All right.
I know how these things happen, but-
Yeah, well, I'm sure that's a typo, but I'm gonna take that in the form of a motion to amend. Is there a second to that? On the motion to amend, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
I'll go ahead. Alderman Gibson, I assume you're moving to adopt as amended, and second it by Alderman Witcher. On the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinance 0603, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance vacating and abandoning easements located on lots 1 and A, block 60, Lakewood in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Mayor, I'm assuming this is on the corner of North Hills and McCain where that-
This is New Woolworth. I mean, not Woolworth, New Walgreens.
Walgreens.
Boy, you aren't dating yourself, aren't you? Woolworth?
Yeah, Woolworth. Boy, you're right. New Walgreens store that's going on the corner, everybody's agreed to. I think this is no, no problem. And, you know, we're always, we like our retail.
And we got the motion to, to spend, put it on second reading, suspend the rules.
Second. Motion made and seconded. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
This is an ordinance vacating and abandoning easements located on lots 1 and A, block 60, Lakewood in the city of North Little Rock, second reading.
Move suspend rules, place it on third reading.
Is there a second?
Yes.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
This is an ordinance vacating and abandoning easements located on lots 1 and A, block 60, Lakewood in the city of North Little Rock, third and final reading.
On the question?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
That concludes new business.
Mr. Baxter, I see you out in the audience. Before I open it up for public comment, before I ask the council members if they have any comments, just give us a quick update in terms of Mr. Powell's commission, and, and when we look to see some activity from y'all. I know we're running just a little bit late, but we certainly understand it. I think a big part of that's probably due to some of the discussions we had in terms of which direction we wanted to go with maybe acquisition of property or construction. So with that-
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. We, the task force has been working diligently since the sales tax passed.
Just so everybody at home knows, this is on the senior citizen center.
On the senior citizen center. And our current plan is to build north of the existing building, tie on where the swimming pool is, build a two-story structure going north. We'll take approximately 28 parking places when we do that, build a corridor outside that end of the building, and have additional swimming facilities, recreational rooms, and rooms for other activities down that hallway. And then we'll remodel some of the existing facility to make room for some programs. We're gonna expand the kitchen just a little bit for some storage, move some office space around. Right now, we have a fairly decent cost estimate that's very close to the $5 million. We expect to come back. The architect is doing the drawings now to get the exact amount of steel, concrete, brick, and everything that goes into it. So our construction manager, that can come up with a very accurate cost estimate, so we can make sure that we're bringing something to you that is not over the $5 million that you've allowed us to utilize, or the citizens have. And we, our plan is to have that cost estimate very soon, and in February have a plan before you that you could vote on and agree that we are going the right direction. We have some preliminary drawings that are at my office, and we'll be glad to let you look those over if you'd like to. But our plan right now is to meet, as soon as our construction manager and the architect get some concrete figures for us, then we'll finalize our plan and bring it to you all to let you say grace over that.
One of the things, Mr. Baxter, that I certainly, you know, and I feel like this council would, would be willing to endorse, but right now, this is just my statement, and that is, as we went to the voters and campaigned for this, we said we'd spend not less than $5 million on our senior center. I know sometimes it's hard to hit that $5 million right on the nose. So it would be, it would certainly be my commitment, and I would feel as councils, but obviously, they reserve their own comments, that if for some reason you should come in less than the $5 million, then I would support you having, whatever the balance is, to, you know, purchase artwork, or whatever that the commission might wanna do to ensure that that campaign commitment is, is met. So I don't know if that will be a problem, probably won't be.
No.
But, but I, I wanted to just voice that in terms of, as you divide your allocations up to that commission, that I certainly intend to address that, at least if this, if that, if that kind of a problem should present itself.
Okay. I appreciate that. Task force has worked hard to, to try to include everything that the citizens gave us in our public hearings. And we're, we're paring things down right now, and hopefully, we can get to a figure that, and a building that looks great, and a figure that fits into the budget, so.
But while I said that on the one side, on the other side, too, you know, we're gonna need to, perhaps the next council meeting, discuss how the ballpark is accelerating more than what we had originally budgeted. I think some of those initial costs are, are causing us to have to address that, cut back, as well as look for perhaps some other opportunities. So, you know, we, we know one thing for sure, that, you know, while you may not hit, be able to hit $5 million right on the head, we sure don't know that there'll be an opportunity to hit a whole lot more than $5 million. So I, I give you that window.
I understand that. And, and one more point that's not really a small point. Our plan would lead us into construction late June, early July, having the building in the dry by December, and then being able to finish the building next year sometime. So, any questions?
We, we're, we're excited.
We are, too. Thank you.
With that, the council, any comments from the council? Alderman Thomas and Alderman Gibson?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I had a couple of things. One of them, I was glad to hear the news of our soccer program and what were going to happen. I had a, I have a granddaughter left this afternoon to Belmont University, and she's been over there a couple or three years on a scholarship. And her coach, I think, has agreed to, to bring one of the games over here, so that we'll have an opportunity to see as well. But, but that is a program that's really growing. And the second thing I had used to, we could take the old paint and things that we had down at the public, public work complex. Can't do it anymore. What, what do we do with the, things like that, old paint?
Excuse me, what was it? Old what?
Paint, and we used to be able to take paint down there and drop it off, and the county, I guess, would pick it up. But can't do that anymore, and I don't know what you do with it, with old paint.
We're getting ready to have some fixed places with the solid waste disposal. Harold, you wanna come with the microphone and answer that real quick on, on paint? I know that the solid waste district is moving in some directions, but Harold keeps up with that pretty closely. So, you know, that's a good question.
Good evening, council. That is true. We were collecting liquid paint at our hazardous chemical collection center. At present, they want you to solidify it, dry it out with kitty litter, or oil dry, and put it in your garbage. That's where we're going now.
And how, how do I do that? That's what, I don't know how, how you do that, so you can put it in the garbage?
Well, you, you, in opening and let it dry out, and let it harden, or you can put something in it to dry it out, make it solid.
I didn't know you could do that. Okay.
So, when did that start?
They say it's not toxic, so we can put it in the landfills, what they're saying.
When did that start?
Last year, in the fall.
So we're not collecting liquid paints anymore at, at any place in the county?
No, sir. We're only collecting oil, antifreeze, and other chemicals that are hazardous to the, to our health.
We are collecting those?
Yes, we are.
But paint, you're, they're saying that you need to open it and either let it dry out in place, or put some kind of addition-
You can let it dry out, or pour it on, on sand, or newspaper, cardboard, let it harden, and then you can put it in your garbage.
But you also could put kitty litter in it? Is that one thing?
You can saturate it with kitty litter, or sand, or dry. It'd do the same thing.
Okay.
All right.
That's answered.
Alderman Tom, I mean Alderman Gibson?
While, while Harold's there, could I interrupt?
Alderman Gibson's in line.
You have a question for him?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman. Harold, I want to commend your department for the great job they're doing in getting the leaves in North Little Rock. It's not a day goes by, though, that I don't get a phone call, or someone stops me in line at the grocery store, and asking, when is the truck gonna be in their part of the neighborhood? Just kinda give, give us an update, and what kinda challenges you guys are going through. I know you worked last Saturday, and I had some people tell me they really appreciated that.
Yeah, we're working extended hours, including Saturdays. This time of year, when it gets this heavy, it takes four to six weeks to make a complete round of the city, regardless. That's with perfect weather, perfect engines, the whole nine yards. We've just completed our first round. We're in our second round right now. We're working in the area that's just north of McCain, west of 16767, and east of North Hills, and up to the city limits of Sherwood. And we should be crossing over McCain sometime this week and start working the Heritage Park area. That's where we are.
Thank you.
And of course-
And if, if, if anyone wants to know, is there a place we publish this information?
Yes, it's in the papers. We also have our Public Works hotline at 371-8355, option 3. I, I update that schedule every week on Friday afternoon, to let you know where we're gonna be the next week.
And why don't you try to work with our folks at the website, and see if you can put it on our webpage, too, to make sure-
I know that, too.
I know you've had some equipment break down, too. Is that correct?
That's true. I'm gonna be coming this year with a proposal for some additional equipment, some new equipment maybe for next year. We are operating machines that are 10 to 15 years old, and it breaks down quite often.
Is there anything that the, that the people in North Little Rock can do to help you, your equipment from breaking down, keep it from breaking down? Is there anything they can guard against?
We encourage mulching, bagging, and we'll pick it up every week.
Thank you.
Rag it to the curb, you're looking at four to six weeks.
If you bang your leaves, I promise you, we'll pick it up every week.
Excuse me?
If you bang your leaves, we'll pick them up every week.
With the regular household, uh-
Yard waste.
Yard waste collection.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Ford, I've got one question. You said four to six weeks it took to do the one-time rotation-
Yes, we started November 14th.
Is, can the citizens expect the second pickup to be somewhere between four to six weeks, based on their first occasion?
It should be a little quicker.
Are you gonna be taking it in the same order? It's what I'm trying to say.
It's going in the same order, yes.
Same sections?
We're starting exactly the same place we started on the 14th of November.
Okay.
Yes, on our second round. And last year, I think we, we completed anywhere, I think it was between five and six rounds completely, completely of the city. We went into an on-call basis in April. So when citizens called in, we get a list of 30 residents, and we go out and take care of the leaves then.
Of course, with the dry, windy weather we've had, the leaves were down about a month earlier this year than they normally are, I think, so. Anybody else wanna get ahead? Alderman Gibson? All right, Alderman Gibson.
Mr. Ford, you can stay up there, because I, that wasn't what my comment was. I, I, one of the things I wanna look at is that, when a person has no trees in their yard, should their neighbor be responsible for raking all the leaves that fly off of their trees into their yard?
I can't tell you what to do with the mayor, sir. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Take a picture. I, I raked some of your yard the other day, and you didn't, I didn't even claim credit for it.
Mayor, it's, 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 it wasn't my leaves. I don't have any trees in my yard anymore. I took them down. On your desk, take an opportunity to read this sometime. It's rather lengthy, and, and it doesn't give a lot of credit to the state of Arkansas for some of the things that we've got going on. But, but it, it tells you where we're deficient. And take an opportunity to read the things in the back in regard to healthcare and education. And, and yet, these are not city council issues, these are state issues. I think that you need to be a little more versed on them, as best as we can be. And yes, I had my leaves absolutely wonderful packed up right on the side of the curb last Friday. Yesterday, they went somewhere else. That's the good news. The bad news is, later yesterday, they all came back. You know, I mean-
I can tell you where they were for 24 hours.
Yesterday, they went somewhere else. That's the good news. The bad news is later yesterday, they all came back. You know, I mean.
I can tell you where they were for twenty-four hours.
An act of God, Alderman, an act of God.
And I, I need to ask, to be excused, I got a business associate in town who is two and a half hours late on his flight, and he is in town. I need to go fetch him.
Yeah, well, welcome to the new year.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other comments from any council member?
I have a comment.
You're not a council member.
I know, I'm not a council member, but I have a comment.
Well, you make your comment.
I want to encourage the council members to drop their extra paper that they throw away by my office, and we will recycle it for them.
Okay.
It might not be a bad idea to put a recycle bin right out by your door, and just, we'll just keep it out there.
We'd be happy to do that.
All right. Well, then, we can count on, you know, hopefully not seeing much white paper in the trashcans, and Ms. Whitby will be happy to recycle it, and we like that. Any other comments from any council member or Ms. Whitby? The microphone's open, public comment section, please come to the microphone and make your Mr. Art, I've got a visit with you just a second after the council meeting too.
I understand. I'd like to ask Mr. Greg Thompson to join me just for a second, if you don't mind. It's okay.
Mayor, first, I want to thank you. You did get the message to him in the meeting today. I'm not going to tell you how I found that out. He did finally contact me. I had already sent the letter to Ms. Whitby. We had a very pleasant conversation over the issues, and you know what the issues are, some of the council members know. I want to thank Mr. Thompson for explaining his viewpoints on some things. He's agreed to work and try to get with Mr. Swanson and get some of our matters resolved. And again, I want to thank you. But the letter had already gone out, and it takes a long time to compose a letter, even if you're on a computer. I appreciate it, and hopefully, we can work everything out.
Sure.
Also, take a moment. If Joe Carlton was living, he would love the colors. It's his colors. The PA system sounds great. However, Alderman Height forgot to turn his microphone on one time, it was hard to hear him. But the PA sounds great, the building looks great, and everybody did a good job. Mr. Stanley and associates who I know personally and done work for, and they know I know how to do PA work, has done a great job. However, seems the press over here has a minor problem. I told them I would mention it. Can we get them a better seating arrangement? Our young lady over here seems to drop her papers, and that's very embarrassing. And I know there's things that's got to be worked out with this new facilities, but if I could get them a better way to do the press, it would be great. Y'all have a happy new year. And again, Mr. Thompson, as I told you, I would not embarrass you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Art. Let me visit with you about one item after the meeting.
Okay.
Microphone's open.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Bobby Taylor. I know y'all probably started hearing about this as I am telling you about it, but I, I want to thank everybody that's been involved in this, the planning, y'all, the review board. And I knew several years ago, when I built onto my house and my shop, the inspectors told me what I needed to do, and I'd done it, and they inspected it, and I didn't have no problem. But I knew if there was anything now like there was then, they was on me like flies. Every time I turned around, they was looking at this or looking at that, and, before they inspected it. And I knew if they had the same quality of people here in North Little Rock now as they had back then, the only thing I was hoping, praying for was people to be patient, let me get the evidence to them before they made the decision to let this thing finish up. And I want to thank y'all and everybody involved in it. And I don't know where it's going, that remains up to him, but I'll take it one day at a time. But I thank y'all for what y'all have done.